And thank you for your opportunity for us to talk to you about the stone pillars located in the corner of Redfield Parkway and West Main. The pillars look good from the street, but mortar is falling out. This is what's falling out of the items there. It's like a filling that you would have the dent soles to hold the teeth together. This is what's holding the stones together. And the pillars are 105 years old, and I think they're getting a little tighter. And of course, with the weather that we have around this great area, we have contractions, as you well know. And of course thawing and warming up causes the pillars and the mortar and the stones to come apart. But what we would like to have, if possible, if you could do it right thing by getting the pillars repaired now. Now again, the reason I say now, because I know you gotta go through a process. And the word "now" is a question of what do you mean by "now"? I'd like to see maybe by the springtime, because obviously I don't expect them working out in the wintertime. But now at this time, because as we wait, the pillars, again, day by day, hour by hour, are starting to fall apart. And if you can get it repaired now before the disaster comes, I think it would be acceptable to the city. Now, it's been here for about 105 years. As a matter of fact, 1912 is when the pillars were put. At that time, Redfield Parkway was a private street. 1928 became part of the City of Batavia as part of their items that would enhance our city. And so therefore, I'd like to keep them available, keep them going. As I said once before, keep the past going till the future can be remembered. And I would appreciate you folks to think heavily in trying to do this. Now, just show you a little item here, two little items. And that's your pictures. So as you see, what it looked like in 1912, I can assure you. And this is what's falling out. But from a distance, it looks good. I'll show you a picture of what it looks like right now. If I had my naked eye, I would say there's no problem. And that's what they look good. We want to keep them looking good. But behind that, like anything else, most deceiving if the weather's very bad, that type of thing. So I hope you can take a good consideration and, as I said, try to do the right thing to save that for the future. So it wasn't falling down, that more than maybe some of the stones fall off. It could be a little danger when the stones falling out, people walking by. So I would appreciate if you considered that. Thank you very much for all your consideration, if you know you're not.
We'll pass these around, we'll get these back.
Yes.
Who's next?
Jim Fitch.
Hi. My name is Jim Fitch. I live at 3 Redfield Parkway. I'm also here tonight to speak about the stone pillars on Redfield. I had the opportunity to read Mr. Molino's memo about the status of the pillars, in which he stated the facts as he found to be true through his research. As I read that memo, it seemed to me that it was to lay out an argument maybe of financial responsibility for the repair of these pillars. To me, the pillars are all part of one entity, as they have been the gateway to the VA area for years. My opinion is that they need to be considered as one entity despite the property underneath these pillars. The repair of these pillars is obviously a big decision, and it has long-term ramifications. There are very little character items left in this city. As we consider this today, the one thing that comes to my mind is the decision to reshape our downtown by losing the character buildings seen in our renderings all over the city from our old Main Street in favor of building them all that we currently occupy to now. Obviously, we can't go backwards, but if you were honest with yourself and asked yourself what the results would be if they took a poll today and it was able to be voted on whether to review that decision or to leave Main Street as it was, my opinion is to be that it would be heavily in favor of retaining the old Main Street. The pillars are of a similar decision. If they are allowed to disappear through a lack of repair and maintenance, they will be gone forever. I would hate to lose them, asking the city to look into the future and see the whole thing all the way through to the end. I'm sure that if we all put our heads together, you can find a positive way to keep these pillars in good repair and preserve a piece of our history in Batavia.
Council members, I'd like to pass this binder. Have it passed amongst yourselves. It contains some pictures of Redfield Parkway and Oakfield. Those pillars are very similar to Batavia's. They were restored, I think, in 1999. And they have the same existing issues with stable pillars on private property. There are also pictures of the deterioration of the stone pillars as they exist today. If you'll allow me to be sappy for just a moment, I got to look at an old chair in the house one day. It had its nicks and bruises, and the cane was worn and broken, but the beauty of the wood and the craftsmanship was still there. I resolved to restore that chair to its original luster, because I should leave things better than I found them for another generation to appreciate it. I grew up where the stone pillars always in sight. In my youth, we sat on the highest peak scouting for the pea trucks on the way to the processing plant in Oakfield. We devised a plan to trip the light, stop the trucks, rake handfuls of vines, and run home with our bounty, only to be scolded, made to shut the peas and eat them for supper. As I've grown older, I have watched other kids come to climb on the stones, have listened to people ask directions to the VA, just look for the street with the stone pillars, which has evolved to become a ceremonial entryway to those from all over making the trip to the VA grounds. I've grown to appreciate the craftsmanship that over 100 years ago put each stone in place to erect these pillars. You simply don't see much of this stonework anymore. And sadly, I've watched them deteriorate. It's our duty as a community to preserve what we have, to leave things better than we found them. When we do this, to quote Howard Owens, "We preserve our architectural heritage, we maintain the character of our neighborhoods, we preserve Batavia history. It helps define our community, and well cared for, good construction will stand for many generations or half centuries." Six years ago, working through the Historic Preservation Commission, I gave the city three estimates from stone restoration nations who generously gave me time and background on the process of restoration. Six years, and nothing has happened. It's time for the city government to assign funds necessary to restore rather than tear down any more of its landmarks. The following statement is from a Redfield revitalization project that was submitted in 2012 to Congresswoman Kathy Hobel. Unfortunately, she wasn't re-elected, and no action was taken on the plan. Reasons for restoring the stone pillars. Recognition of veterans. As the main gateway into the U.S. Veterans Hospital, the improvements will honor those who have served our country. Neighborhood pride. The gateway pillars and overall design of street provide Redfield Parkway residents and Redfield Parkway neighborhood association with a sense of pride. Improvement would also reinforce the unique character of the street, which influences property values. Aesthetic benefits. The gateway pillars are seen by more than 25,000 travelers daily on Route 5, and restoration of the pillars will improve their experience. I submit that it's now 50,000 travelers going on Route 5, but... Safety. Rebuilding will provide long-term structural integrity of the pillars that are within the Route 5 and Redfield Parkway right-ofways. Historic preservation. The City of Batavia Historic Preservation Commission supports and promotes the revitalization of historic pillars. I also have a letter that was written in 2012 to the city officials in support of the Redfield Parkway pillars being redone. Since 1965, the Landmark Society of Genesee County has encouraged local communities and individuals to work together to preserve our architectural heritage. Preservation, protection, and improvement of the landmarks located throughout Genesee County make up the objectives of this society. I guess I've done it.
Good morning, Dorothy.
Evening. I'm Mr. Don Rowley. I live at 6 Redfield Parkway, working with the Owens. And I'm not as eloquent as my predecessors, but I just wanted to add my voice in support of repairing these columns. They've been there to develop the style and class to the city, the street, and the entrance to the Veterans Hospital for years, and they should be maintained. Don't let them decay to the point that the city park shelters did, for example. That was a travesty, in my judgment, where they had to be removed. Please repair them. Thank you.
Any response to public comments? Chris Wigg?
As councilperson for the Fourth Order, I couldn't support the restoration project.
Chris check?
The only thing that bothers me is the fact that they are on private property, some of them. Jason, if there was an accident over there and someone lost control of their vehicle, would it be the city's responsibility, or would it be the homeowner's responsibility if someone was hurt? Or could they subvert?
I really expect both in that case. I mean, I don't know that any of the responsibility, I don't know that the pillars would have anything to do with a vehicle accident, just from a location perspective. But as we can talk about this issue later in the meeting, I can talk about the dynamics of the multiple ownership, and there's ways to address those. Is it too far?
What I think we're gonna do, because this is kind of a topic at the fore, when we get through council response to public comments, I'd rather you go right into that instead of waiting till the end of the meeting, so these people can hear what we're gonna talk about at that point. Anybody else have any comments?
I'm not through.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I wasn't. Anyways, are there any other pieces of property that have something significant on it, or are we gonna show a precedence here?
I think the definition of significant is the issue you wanna deal with. There is nothing that I'm aware of that has that type of structure of that size that I'm aware of in the city. That doesn't mean it doesn't exist, that doesn't mean I'm not aware of it, but I don't know of anything. There isn't a gateway like that. I mean, Redfield Parkway is a very special street. It's the only street with the median that had that type of gateway to it. So if there isn't anything as prominent of that that I'm aware of in the city.
Okay. The next question that I have is the cost of storing of this. You gave us a figure of 50,000. Is that the definite figure?
No, I don't think there is a clear understanding of what that is right now. I think, you know, part of that discussion I'll get into is if you really want to approach this the right way, I think you've gotta have a real, someone who has a background, whether it's an engineering firm, an architecture firm, a preservationist group that has the real background to do a full assessment of the condition of it, and how do you restore it properly, so that we're not here having this discussion five, 10 years from now. It'll be more long-lasting and so on and so forth. I think that's the appropriate way to go at it, because, and like I said, I get into a little bit more, so I think that would be the best way to approach it, I think.
Well, I will look for the study on it, so we definitely know the cost of everything. Thank you.
Ms. Briggs?
I was just gonna ask, okay, because I'm also very supportive of the study. What I wanted to know is, maybe once this study then, do you know if it would include the timetable? What I mean is, we're not gonna wait another six years. We're not gonna say, hey, guess what, this is gonna take six years to do this. Do you know what I'm saying? It would, I would think it would be, I'm just going to assume, they would have some type of timeline. They would be very...
I mean, you set the scope of the work to be done, so you can determine that scope, and depending on how long it takes to do that review, you can determine how quickly or how long you want it to take to do that.
Yeah, I just wanna thank you, Mr. Council President, for moving this up on the agenda so we can discuss it at a high rate. I'll make my comments. Thank you. Mr. Beal?
I also support Mr. Guinness, Mr. Fitch, and I think that the study is a waste of time and money. You can just get a good mason and go down there and give you a quote on it in about a week on how to fix it. Don't waste the time and money on a study. That's all we usually do, is waste money on studies. Get a good mason, and he'll give you a quote in a week.
Two points. I just looked at Redfield Parkway in Oakfield. Somebody knows how to fix this, because that looks gorgeous and looks like the same pillars. Secondly, as for accidents, I have, if one of those pillars jumps out in front of a car, we're worse yet than we think we are. On the other hand, if somebody's walking by and the pillar falls on their head, we are in bad shape, so you have to repair it.
I'm thinking that, and I agree with Mr. Beal in reference, the studies be most of the time a waste of money and time. But in this particular case, because of the private property factor, I mean, we need to look at maybe the possibility, and it was discussed before, of the city taking ownership of the whole thing. And I'll tell you why. Because right now, everybody likes the pillars. Somebody buys this house to be vindictive or mean, and they say, "I own this part, and I want this removed." And how do we stop them from now removing historical landmark? It's not really a historical landmark yet either. So the study can maybe identify whether should we make a historical landmark, how we address the private property issue, and maybe... So these are things that, besides just the mason aspect, I think we should maybe, when we get to that point and hear the whole investigation, maybe these are some things we want to keep in the background. Just some thoughts.
Do you want me to wait till we discuss?
Yeah, I think we should, because Mr. Beal, why don't you just go right into that right now? You can explain the whole thing.
So what I included in the memo is a brief evaluation of some of the information we have available to us. There's, I think there's two elements to this that I think you wanna take away from. One is the ownership piece, and you touched on it a little bit earlier, Council President. You've got four structures and two, and three different pieces of property, or you've got three different titles, I should say, owners. There's two outside posts that are on private property, each and then the actual monuments of structures, which are what we call city owns. So there's an evaluation as to how do you wanna approach it? If restoration is the choice that you wanna move forward with, either you're gonna go a route of getting a permanent easement to access those pillars, and assume responsibility of them, or do you need to assume responsibility for maintenance, for upkeep, and any liability that comes with it? Or the other possibility is you actually have the property owners carve that piece of property out and dedicate it, or the city purchases it for fair market value, which I can't imagine is a whole lot of square feet wide, it's not a lot of money, it's not a lot of space. The other alternative is that you have three, you know, three different property owners approach restoration collectively, which is probably the most complicated one. So as to what are the exact details of the first two options, you know, I don't know all the legal background to it. I would imagine that if you were to try to take ownership of it, it would include surveys of both properties, probably some type of sale contract, and then the transfer of that section of the property over to the city. The easement may be the easiest way of going around it. But then again, there's a permanent restriction and covenant that goes with the land of the two adjacent properties. So when those properties are sold, it's a permanent covenant of property. Again, that's a very rude, you know, basic overview of those options. So there's the ownership issue, which I think is, still has to be, you know, figured out. And I would imagine either one of those, whether it's an easement or taking title to it or taking ownership to it, will be part of our council action as well. The other aspect is what to do with them. And maybe the study is the wrong word for it, because it's not a study in the sense of when we think of a long, long gated study. I think more of an evaluation of it. I don't know that I would agree that it's as simple as getting an empty mason to do this. This is a rather old piece of structure, and you're probably going to want someone who does historic restoration to look at it in order to ensure that it's preserved in the context of the way it was built. So for example, we have done some repairs over the years before, some basic masonry work, and part of the challenge, I think, with that is having it done properly with respect to the type of mortar that's being used and the way it's approached. I also think the evaluation, you wanna include, wasn't some of the structural integrity of it, which is a little bit more than, I think, just a review of it. The estimates that we had from 2012, there was a wide, excuse me, a wide scope of work that was outlined in it. It really wasn't specific. Some of them were more specific, some were less specific, and there was a wide range of price, from 16,000 to almost 30,000. That to me says that there could, there probably needs to be a better defined scope of work in order to understand exactly what it is, the work that needs to be done on it, which will then lead to what the price or value of that is. So I guess maybe the study is not the right word for more of an evaluation. I don't envision this being a six-month study, it being evaluation, and probably finding, if not engineering firm, a group that has more experience in historic restoration to be able to say, "All right, I can take this on, I can evaluate it. This is the scope of work I'm going to do. This is the product that's gonna come out of it." The legal piece to it is probably something the city attorney and I can discuss as to what's the best approach to it. Like I said, the first glimpse of easement is probably the better way to do it than carving out the actual property, so. So that's the basic overview of it. I did give you some history of it. You know, it's something, we did apply for some funding in 2012. You know, we applied for $75,000 worth of work, which is really, you know, a total, you know, total redo, but a complete revitalization of it, and probably looking at some of the lighting and how the lighting can be better structured, because there's two light posts, or two lights on top of two of the posts there. There is some discrepancies with one of them. I believe at one point in time, one had some major damage to it, so, you know, it's been rebuilt, but not to the exact, extremely same, same thing as the original side of it. So there might be some improvements to be done to it.
I think there was a car.
I believe there was.
And we had a difficult time finding a proper mason to even do the work. I remember there were several months had gone by trying to pitch a loan to do it.
I mean, my suggestion is, if it's something that the council's interested in doing, I think when you do it, you should do it the right way, and you should make the right investments in it. And it might be a little costly, but this way, we're not gonna be back at this discussion in five, 10 years from now with cracking mortar or patchwork on it. I don't know what that cost is, because I think you need an expert to really review it and spend some time on it.
Have you looked into, is it qualified to be declared a historical monument or something?
Not necessarily. So I met with the city historian today, and we talked at length about this, this process. You know, there's three avenues, I think, that you can look at. One is the National Registry of Historic Places. There's a state and national registry that are very similar in terms of qualifications. The next is a designated historical landmark, which is nationally done, and then the last would be a local designation by your local historic preservation commission. I think the first two are the ones that would carry any weight to it in terms of being able to seek funding. And I don't know that you qual, I can say for certain that you wouldn't qualify for a designated historical landmark. There's only about 2,500 of them in the nation. It's very restrictive. It's kind of a subset of the National Registry of Historic Places, where Historic Places has 90,000 nationwide, and the landmark has 2,500 nationwide. And I even think, and again, Larry had just briefly reviewed it, you know, today, I think it's a stretch with the National Registry of Historic Places. What would probably take place is, you know, us contacting them, saying, "Here's the background to it. Here's what it includes. Does this qualify for us to move forward to, will you consider this as an application?" And at that point, it's kind of, you have to kind of, almost do a letter intent to say, "This is what we have. Is this something you'll consider?" Yes, move forward with the application, or no, we're not gonna consider, and that would kind of end that discussion. The local designations of all the historic preservation commission can be done, but I don't know that it's gonna carry much weight with it with respect to additional funding opportunities or any protection. It has no protections of it, and the pillars can still be taken down and so on and so forth. So, you know, I was hoping that there might be some avenue. There might be, I think we'd have to do a little bit more research, particularly with the National Registry of Historic Places, but I would say it doesn't look very positive that designation...
What about the fact that it's the gateway to the VA hospital, where many sacrifices are made by the people who are hospitalized there?
Sure.
That's my thought, is, I mean, this is not just a side street. This has a different connection to it, because it would be a hospital.
Like I said, that package may be applicable. I don't know. It's a conversation you'd have to have with them. I know the VA, I think, was constructed in the 1930s. You know, this was obviously a little before that, 1912 timeframe, so, you know, I don't know, I'm not, that's not my area of expertise, but it's a conversation that we would wanna have with them, the agencies, to say, you know, is this something that would be worthwhile us to see, or we do consider for an application? If so, then, you know, we'd have to determine if that's a direction we wanna take, and what's the benefit to it at the end of the day versus the consequence. And then, and then if not, then we, then we move forward with whatever path we wanna move forward with it. I mean, I think, I think at the end of the day, to evaluate this the right way, to make the right investment that's gonna be lasting, I think you wanna have a professional do an evaluation of it. And outline the scope of work, and then outline a lot of the improvements. So this way, here's the package. This is what we know it's gonna cost us. This is the amount of work that's gonna be done to it, and then it can be bid. And I think that's another key component to this, is we don't know, bet it, because we don't know what work there is to be done in it.
Wasn't there money outlined in this memo in reference to applying for, to do that research?
There is. I mean, those are usually timed, they're not open competitive applications. So for example, the one that I outlined, and to be honest with you, after I looked at it further, after this memo went out, I'm less convinced that it actually applies to it. The TAG rate, or the TAG program, type of little safety strike program, I think is really restricted towards facilities, which this isn't one. So I don't know that that's gonna help us with doing that evaluation. The evaluation may cost some money to do, what, I don't know yet, because I haven't talked to a professional that would outline what the scope of work could be.
Mr. Break?
Yeah, I agree with the city manager here, that I think the simplest thing is an easement or right-of-way change should be done. Point out, last time when the pillars were hit with a vehicle, the ownership was no consequence that the city hired someone that went and slapped some mortar on it and didn't last it at all. But one of the things I'd like to point out is that the Redfield Parkway Association is probably the oldest association, street association in the City of Batavia, and they meet all the goals that we have set out for part of Batavia, expanding neighborhood pride, branding and marketing in neighborhoods. I mean, we all, anyone that grew up in Batavia, when you drove down the street, oh, there's Redfield, we used to the columns. And one of the things that I've always admired, this organization, this group of homeowners, residents, they always put up flags in the summer, they plant flowers, they landscaping to center medians, which the city owns, which they're on city property landscaping, and doing a great job. They put up Christmas trees, and it's obviously, I was told today that one of the media outlets quoted me as saying that this was, that I wanted to spend $52,000 to fix them, and this was really an entrance to the VA. Well, there's a picture here with the pillars. There's no VA in sight, because the VA was built in 1913.
There's no houses there either.
There's no houses. Yep, and my dad told me stories when he was a kid, that the barn stormers would land in that area, it was just a big field, and give people rides from the fairgrounds, which was the county fairgrounds. But anyway, I think these people do a stellar job, this organization. It's everything that we're trying to promote in Batavia. I think we need to move forward with it, but, you know, we can study it, study it, study it. In 1911, or 2011, the Finger Lakes Planning Council named Redfield Parkway District as a cultural significant site. So it does a whole lot of water in the national areas, as you know, but it's something. I mean, they're saying, hey, this is something, we ought to take care of it. There's similar columns in Leroy, Oakfield, and all that. I just recommend that we move forward, get it done. Get it done.
Yeah, I agree that it has to be done, and I'm in favor of that as well. My big concern is, like you said, Gino, what protects the ones? How can we best protect the ones that sit on private property? An easement would not protect those, would it?
It depends on what rights come with that. I mean, this is where I wanna talk to George a little bit more as to what's the best approach to it. I mean, a clean cut, which would leave no doubt as to who's responsible for it, as if we were to carve out that piece of property and accept that. Now, mind you, there is hedges around them, which, you know, may come into discussion as to how we can turn those and so on and so forth, and that may be private property. So I think it's a discussion, I said that with the city attorney, as to what's the best way to approach it in terms of, you know, maintenance responsibility, you know, do you want to put anything else with that? You know, with the easement, it's a covenant with the land, so do you put any other restrictions that go with it, meaning it can't be taken down? You know, that's a private property, and we're discussing if they wanna enter into do that. You know, I don't know what impact that, I mean, I don't think it would have a negative impact on the property long-term, but again, you're dealing with two separate... impact on the property long-term, but again, you're dealing with two separate property. So there's kind of, I think we just have to go through that process, is to understand the pros and cons of both to determine what might be the best action.
I mean, no one probably has really addressed this in the past, and I'm not concerned that a property owner would come in there and say, "I'm going to knock that down," but my concern is if a property owner gets in there and in the future it needs to be a little rehab done to it, and that property owner can't afford to do it, or my concern would be the property owner says, "Well, I can't afford it. Therefore, it's not going to get done." So I guess, as we're looking, like Gino says, we're looking into it, that would be one of my main concerns, is that we figure out a process that we can take to protect those.
And we have cooperative stakeholders now. Now's the time to get down to the law and the tree. So at this point, I would, to recap everything, I suggest I see pretty much a consensus that we at least direct the city manager to look into this further, and we're going to need some pretty hard costs and what kind of man-hours are going to be in this before we make that final decision. I don't want it to wait till January of next year, so...
I mean, what will probably have to happen is we'll need to get understanding of the cost of an evaluation, if there's a cost of an evaluation to be done. Because you're talking about a little bit more than just an estimated, you know, small amount of work. So there may be a cost for an evaluation to be done. That's when we come to you, we can outline what that scope of work would be, and then you can authorize the approval that evaluation be completed, and then once it's done, then we'll have an understanding of what the cost of capital work, you know, the capital project itself would be.
What's your timetable for that? Would it be done by, like, the next month, or, because we got two months before?
I think we could probably have something to you for the January conference meeting, at least to understand what the cost of an evaluation would be, and then from there, we're probably going to stand that, all right, the evaluation will take X amount of weeks, and then, you know, we'll probably be able to make a decision by spring.
Is that sound reasonable, Tom? Okay, so, you know, consider that the direction, and then we see a consensus among council for that, then we will watch some regular updates.
Yep. Essentially, I think what you're looking for is a firm, a masonry restoration firm to put together a short support, yes, outlining the scope of work. Maybe not necessarily, well, it'll be determined if you want them to put together a whole bit package, you'll be involved in the process. You might want to, just because of the uniqueness of this work.
Yeah, there might be very limited people that can actually...
Yeah, and just, as one potential firm, think about old Morris Basin Rake restoration block, those involved in the Old Stone Chimney Project, Macro Falls recently. I'm sure there are others out there, but I think that's the type of firm that has experience with the historic stone structures and their revitalization that you want involved with something like this. On one hand, it's a historic structure, it's a community, you want to treat it and such. On the other hand, you want to just go in there and make a repair, and understand both sides. So, you know, in some respect, the historic designation, unless it quickly opens the door to some grant, if we're not aware, it may not still...
And I wouldn't want it to change the character, but if they redid it, but if we did it and it looked totally different, that wouldn't be good either. So it's got to be, maintain its original character.
Yeah, I don't know that any designation right now is going to permit any going to you. And time, you know, just to give you an example, the landmark status, the national landmark status, it takes three to five years to...
Oh.
I mean, you're not really qualified for that anyways, but, you know, these things don't matter.
I think we're at the point where we need some...
Ms. Christian?
So we are applying for the tag rent, and then, no?
No.
We're putting in five hundred dollars local match right now?
What I would do is, I think, I'll talk with some of the staff, I know Councilman Tavasky's got a little bit of background in historic preservation, an interest in it. I think, you know, what we want to do is talk maybe with HBC a little bit as to, what are some firms out there that can take a brief look at this and say, "What type of evaluation would be done on it to understand what we're going to do this?" And then from there, probably talk to our engineers as well. Come back to you if there's an evaluation cost, which I suspect there will be. Come to you with what that scope of work is and authorize it so that we can start that evaluation, and then go back in the spring and some type of capital cost.
Maybe we're going to want to write up some type of bid, too, to make sure that all the proper items are covered in there.
In the meantime, we're still going to talk to the property owners to see if we can come to some payment.
Right. I think while that's going on, George and I'll talk about relationships as to what's the best avenue for it. Obviously, I know the Owens very well, don't know the other property owners, we'll reach out to them as well, and try to figure out what is the best solution for everyone.
Mr. McGinnis?
Mr. Council President, Mr. Olicks would like us...
Yeah, I was going to, yeah, for you.
Yeah, after, thanks.
I was going to let you speak first, and then I was going to come if you were good. Okay, what was your question?
Well, just, Mr. Canelli asked a great question, because somehow, over the years, that one pillar on our particular site, I would be willing to sell to the city for a dollar, and because of my generosity, I'll give the city the dollar of the penny. So thankfully...
Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure so we can be part of over, so that...
We're not going to let that stop.
Okay. Thank you very much. Just wanted to make sure.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion? Okay, so you have an idea of what we're going for? Keep us, please keep us updated, even if it's just an email. It's in a while to let us know what progress is, so all council will be aware of it at the same time. Thank you very much. Any other responses to public comments? Communications?